Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our April 8th, 2025 Phoenixville Borough Council Monthly Meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our council meeting, both in person and virtually, and we're glad that you've joined us here tonight. During the public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, committee members joining us via the Zoom platform may raise their hand virtually. A member of our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, they'll then be able to make comment to council. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight, and then move to those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods, one towards the beginning, well, two general public comment periods, one towards the beginning, one towards the end, and participation is limited to once per a public participation session. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. With that, we do thank you for joining us tonight. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
From the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can do roll call, Mr. Manager.
Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito.
President.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Shewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief Solicitor, here, you have a corpse, sir.
Thank you. With that, we'll open up with the first round of public comment. If any members of the public who are wishing to join us or wishing to make comment, please make your way to the podium. We do ask that you sign in on the sheet provided on the podium and just mention to counsel as you make your comments, your name, and whether you are a resident, business owner, or just taxpayer here in the borough. And then similarly, if anybody's joining us on the Zoom platform, if they want to raise their hand digitally now, Ms. Logan can work through that list. Okay, with that, we will close the first round of public comment, move on with our agenda tonight. One item before the presentations item, we do have, prior to tonight's meeting, we held an executive session for Borough Council to discuss the following item, a matter of personnel related to potential hiring of a new police officer. That was the one item of discussion in the previously held exec session. With that, we'll move, we don't have any presentations on tonight's agenda, so we'll move into the consent agenda, item five. Are there any items that council would like to withdraw from the consent agenda? Ms. Dugan?
Hi, I would really like to take B four and move that out of the consent agenda.
Very good. Any other items from council? Seeing none, was council's pleasure.
Mr. President, with the exception of that item, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Very good. Motion in a second. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And this brings us to our first round of communications and council participation. So any updates the council may have to bring to the floor, any communications from constituents, any items in general? Okay, we have a second one at the end of the night, so we'll go on with our agenda here. Mr. Mayor, it's.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those of you who are joining us here in person and those joining us at home. A couple of things, just want to highlight some events that took place in the last month. It is definitely heating up in Phoenixville. It's getting exciting. Lots of events coming online. Thank you to the Phoenixville Area Senior Center for their extraordinary Irish wake, also to Molly McGuire's for their extraordinary St. Patrick's Day celebrations, the Phoenixville Early Learning Center and Manavon Elementary School, along with Renaissance Academy hosted career days last month, which were very successful. A special shout out and thank you also to our Chief of Police and our police officers who actually attended some of the career days. Big shout out to 100 Men of Phoenixville. Congratulations on their inaugural event, which took place this last month. There will be another one, if you are interested in joining, that will be taking place in October. This month's recipient of over $7,000 from that group went to Good Samaritan Services. Also, congratulations to the library for hosting their buzzed spelling bee. It is exactly as it sounds. You go and you spell words while having adult beverages. Also, congratulations to Crescendo, Phoenixville, our violin program. If you've ever had the opportunity to learn about it, Crescendo is a free violin program available to all students at our elementary school. And so, a great program, they had their concert last week. Also, congratulations to our Social Concerns Committee and all the sponsors of the Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast, and also congratulations to Barnstone Arts, which is trauma-informed art therapy. They had their Barnstone Live program last weekend, which was very successful. Coming up tomorrow will be the kickoff for this year's Phoenixville Social. It's just a great way for people to get together. That's put on through the Phoenixville J.C.'s. That's from six to eight tomorrow at Boardroom. On the 11th will be Partners Creating Community, who are responsible for 260 Bridge, the cafe right here on the corner of Bridge and Gay Street. They are having their annual gala at the Foundry Building. The 15th is going to be Tax Day, just a reminder to everyone, and we also believe that is the day that Brown's Cow opens, so you can swing by and have some ice cream after filing your taxes. Happy holidays to anyone who is celebrating all the holidays, which are taking place throughout the month of May, throughout the month of April, sorry. Starting May 1st, on May 1st, Paul Freel will be hosting a town hall meeting. Paul Freel, of course, being our state representative here in Phoenixville. On May 3rd, we have a number of events going on in the community, including Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, Mental Health Fund Day being put on through the Rec Center, and then Stable 12 is having their Beer Garden reopening ceremony and also their anniversary celebration that day. May 4th will be Healthcare Access's 25th Anniversary, taking place in Reeves Park. May 11th, of course, we wish all of the mothers out there a happy Mother's Day. And then just a reminder to put on your calendar, but the 14th through the 17th of May is our annual Dogwood Festival, the 82nd Annual Dogwood Festival here in Phoenixville, with the parade being on the 17th, starting at 1:00 p.m. With that, Mr. President, thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, move into Section 8 of tonight's agenda, which is appointments. Every month, we call for residents interested in being appointed to various boards, commissions, and committees. With tonight's consent agenda, reappointing several members who have stepped up again. We have a nearly full slate, but we do have some appointments that will be on the horizon. And just as one note, I see Mr. Dean and Polly is here. We did approve you in the consent agenda, so thank you for stepping up again. So, any members that are interested in joining any boards, commissions, or committees, please reach out to your Borough Councilperson. They will walk you through the process. It is painless, and we always need volunteers to help us run the, run our community. So with that, we'll move into Section 9 of tonight's agenda. We have new business, including authorization for conditional offer of employment for another patrol officer. Was council's pleasure.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to authorize a conditional offer of employment for David Dry as parole officer.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in, there's more?
She said parole officer.
Then a new department? We have a new division coming out?
A new division we're adding.
So we have an offer of, conditional offer of employment for officer, for patrol officer. So that was a motion and a second. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Fair. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, we have a motion to adopt Civil Service Commission Recommended Revisions to the Rules and Regulations, a lengthy process that I am glad our new Civil Service Solicitor was able to help us guide through. Was council's pleasure.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the Civil Service Commission's Recommended Revisions to their Rules and Regulations.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Any questions on the updated Rules and Regulations for Civil Service? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. And lastly, under new business, we have a motion for, well, before we have a motion, can we have some background from our Solicitor?
Sure. So, after years of not receiving any notices of intent to remediate, we now have a second in as many months, and unfortunately, similar to the one we ratified last month, we received this notice of intent to remediate the Act Two cleanup on 472 and 478 Nut Road shortly after our last meeting. However, it was dated and, you know, placed in the mail prior to our last meeting. And under the Pennsylvania Land Recycling and Environmental Standards Act, also known as Act Two, municipality has 30 days to express interest in being involved in the voluntary cleanup within its boundaries. And involvement does not necessarily mean we will be actively involved, but it does require the landowner engaged in the cleanup to provide us with information so that we can review it and decide how involved we want to be. And it also includes additional public provision of information. So, like last month, while not typically how we do things, in order to not miss our deadline, at my recommendation, we sent a letter requesting our involvement in the Act Two cleanup, and we are asking for council to ratify that action this evening.
With this Solicitor's background on this, on this item for consideration, was council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that, that we ratify the issuance of request for involvement letter for, regarding 472, 478 Nut Road.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. That will move on. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to Section 11. We have resolutions and ordinances. Quite a number to get through tonight. The first on our list is a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the extinguishment of a trail easement on property located at 512 South Street, identified as UPI 1521.1A.
So moved. Oops.
Go for it.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Strunfeld, and we'll move over to the Solicitor for some background.
Yeah, so, as council knows, in February, you authorized us to move forward with preparing the documents necessary to extinguish the trail easement over 512 South Street. However, as an easement is a property interest, extinguishing such property interest should be done by resolution pursuant to the Borough Code. So, as a result, tonight before you, as a resolution authorizing the filing of an extinguishment of trail easement and recording thereof with the Chester County Recorder of Deeds Office.
Any questions on the motion? Last month, we had tabled this item because of the attendance. I did not want to inadvertently tip the scales of proceedings here, so we did table this last month. I think we've had plenty of background. Any other questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries six two. Next up, we have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a permanent sidewalk easement agreement of a portion of parcel of land identified as 85 Star Street, UPI 151098.
So before we jump into a motion for this, I'm going to give a background that's going to apply to items B, C, D, and E. As council and the public may know, we are engaged in an improvement plan for the intersection of Bridge and Star Street, which will in part extend Star Street to Ashland Street and provide additional turning lanes and widths. And as a part of that project, will, will be improving the sidewalks as well. As you may know, that part of the portion there of Bridge Street and Star Street are PennDOT roads, so we have to follow PennDOT procedures. And under PennDOT procedures, there are certain things that are required to happen with this improvement plan that are maybe slightly beyond the normal roadway improvement. And two of those things are that we own a portion of right-of-way along the southeast corner of Bridge and Star, that PennDOT is requiring us to turn over is right-of-way to their PennDOT road, which was expected. In addition, Holy Ghost Church's driveway is required to be limited to right-in, right-out. Now, that is something that Holy Ghost had to voluntarily agree to, and as a part of allowing us to make that restriction on their driveway, we have agreed to provide a second driveway farther down Star Street in order to allow us to move forward with the entire intersection improvement. Similar to a lot of other roadway improvements that we do, we are also requesting sidewalk easement agreements. And then, sometimes we need to get a little bit farther onto someone's property so that we have, you know, can have our backhoe temporarily on their property so we can dig where we need to dig in order to put the street. And then, when the construction's done, we're off and it's entirely their property again, and that's called a temporary construction easement. So we are requesting temporary construction easements from some of the nearby property owners as well. And then, lastly, where we optimally want to put a new traffic signal pole, we are requesting an easement for that as well. So, these resolutions are all the property owners that have already agreed to provide us with the necessary easements and rights that we need to move forward with the project. The ordinance is to accept the dedication of a right-of-way that was offered to us in 2006. We, we actually believe that before we vote in the ordinance, we'll probably have agreements with that property owner and have a resolution before you next month instead. But because of the way ordinances work with needing to schedule and advertise them first, we want to make sure we're not holding up the project, so we're kind of starting that process now. So, the actual explanation applies to items 11, B, C, D, and E, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Due to the nature of B, C, D, and E, are they able to just be bundled into a single motion? Would you like them separate?
I would prefer them separate.
Okay. Mr. Kirchner?
Thank you. With regard to the driveway relocation, is, is that part of the overall work that's being done there, or will that be done at the property owner's expense? Or is it too early to determine that at this point?
So, it will be done at our expense. Whether it's part of the overall project is a slightly nuanced answer. Probably for practical understanding, yes, it's part of the overall project. However, it is not a part of the overall project as far as what we are bidding, what contractors are doing. Our staff is planning on doing a lot of that work because we have, you know, a quite sophisticated public work department.
Well, that, that seems reasonable, since it was a negotiation with the property owner that got us to this point. So, and with regard to item E, advertising and ordinance, if, if it seems like that, that agreement isn't going to come about, do you have to go forward with the advertisement, or can you, can the borough pull back on that until you, the borough gets clarity on the situation?
So, we need an authorization to advertise, but we would hold off on advertising until we have a better idea. But this allows us to have that authorization in our back pocket in case we do need to move forward with an advertisement.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council on items B, C, D, or E? Seeing none, we'll take individual motions.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a permanent sidewalk easement agreement of the portion of the parcel of land identified as 85 Star Street, UPI number 15-10-98.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Item C.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of a driveway relocation agreement and the acceptance of the permanent sidewalk easement agreement of the portion of the parcels of land identified as 55 Star Street and 70 Holy Ghost Way, and more particularly identified as Chester County UPI numbers 15-10-97 and 15-10-104 respectively.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this item? Happy to see these continue to move along here. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, we have item D with a.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of a portion of certain borough-owned real estate identified as Chester County UPI number 15-10-103.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Any questions on this item? It's been explained by our Solicitor, as a reminder. Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And lastly, item E.
I guess I'll round them out. And Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to schedule an advertising ordinance, accepting dedication of a right-of-way, of right-of-way on Star Street, previously offered from 101 Bridge Street, more particularly identified as Chester County UPI number 15-9-157.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Carries eight zero. And with that, we have two last ordinance amendments that have been, that have been scheduled and advertised for both housing and motor vehicles. Was council's pleasure for the Chapter 11 update?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to Chapter 11 housing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the Chapter 11 update?
I'm going to give a quick background here. First, both this ordinance and the next ordinance were advertised with the Pottstown Mercury on March 24th, 2025, and both were sent to the Law Library in Pottstown Mercury for public inspection on March 19th, 2025. So, this amendment to the housing chapter is to the rental provision, and as you may know, our, we require rental licenses for any dwelling that is not owner occupied. We recognized that certain people have beneficial trusts, whether because it's a, you know, investment strategy, or because, you know, they're, they're disabled and they have a trust set up for them, or for whatever reason, but that for practical purposes, they were owner occupied, but not for legal purposes. So, what this ordinance amendment does is provides a waiver process for trust-held properties that are occupied by the beneficiary of the trust.
Any questions on the background? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And last, we have Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles update.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Strunfeld. Questions on this month's update to motor vehicles, Chapter 15? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. That brings us to Section 12 of tonight's agenda, the Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. We'll start with Ms. Dugan and Harb.
Okay, I got a couple here. First one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Certificate of Appropriateness for Signage for 10 South Main Street.
Second.
This is just a relocation of a sign that was previously approved.
Moving at a full 30 feet down, down the street?
Yeah.
So, motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the Certificate of Appropriateness for Signage for 323 Bridge Street.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. Any questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, on this one, I might have to change the motion. Are the people here for this tonight? Okay, um, well, I, I want to make a motion just so we can start the conversation. So I'll just make a motion to approve in part and deny in part the Certificate of Appropriateness submitted for 368 Bridge Street.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. The applicant is here with us tonight, the property owner or vested interest. Ms. Dugan, do you want to tee off the conversation?
Yeah, I'd like to just start with a little background on this. This is about, this couldn't be approved in Harb because it's against the rules with the stucco, so Harb can do it. Council can always override any of that, but Harb didn't feel that they could do that. However, they did work with them a little and went with some ideas. They have a wall that really needs replacing, but stucco, and white stucco specifically, is probably not the best idea, but if there is some tan-colored stucco that is in building, the building directly next door, that might match it, and it might go with it. So, can, would you mind coming up to explain further from your perspective?
And Rick, if you'd just introduce yourself.
Hi, guys. Richard Wolf, owner of Stable 12 Brewing Company across the street. Currently, we are under renovations for our outdoor beer garden. While we're doing that, we would like to wrap in putting stucco on the side of the building, the terracotta. We want to match this current building, the building next door to us. We are also seeing that our stucco is cracking, not the stucco, the terracotta is cracking. And so, what happens in the wintertime, water gets in, it starts to freeze, and it's starting to push apart. So we're trying to get ahead of that while we're doing all the construction now, just wrap that into everything else to prevent further damage and further structural damage to the property.
And you're comfortable with the conditions that were discussed and agreed upon in the Harb meeting last night?
Which were?
What pertaining to the stucco coloring and?
I will, I will match this building, that building, whatever color you guys pick for, I'm fine with that. I just want.
If it fits the building right next door, I think it just, it would work with it, and I think we could get around that we don't normally approve stucco in this situation.
My, my goal was to match the rest of town, so I wanted to match this building and that building, whatever the color is, I'm fine with that. So, I don't know if you guys chose the same color, both buildings, or they're slightly different. You guys can tell me which color you want, but I'm fine with both of them.
That information could be relayed to the update? Yeah. We'll, we'll send it out to you. Sounds like they, sounds like they chose a color last night and will be relayed.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I like the terracotta, but I understand the dilemma.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then, can I just amend my motion then? So?
Yes, I would suggest that you amend your motion to be an approval with the condition that the stucco color is modified to as discussed by Harb last night.
Okay, so moved.
How many agreement is seconder?
Yeah. Motion's been updated by the original and the seconder. Any other questions on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, and finally, um, are the people that are involved in this motion here tonight? This is the problem here. They keep on coming back, and they did seem to make a, an offer to make things better, and so we approved it there. However, we have not had any contact with them at Harb, so I, I don't know, like, some of the things are not perfect, but it's better than the last one. And so, I mean, I don't even know if I personally want to make this motion because, because I don't think I want to vote for it, given that they're, they're already under, they have been cited now for not, they've, they put up everything that we did not approve before. Everything's still there. They have not taken anything down, and I'm not encouraged that they're actually going to do what they say they're going to do at this point. So, I, I don't know, I guess, if someone else wants to make this motion, that's fantastic. It's the four, it's the last one. The cousins.
Would it be appropriate to table?
We, we have to make a decision this evening.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Certificate of Appropriateness for Signage for 37 Bridge Street. Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmenito, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Mr. Moore? Seeing none, all those in favor? Mr. Moore?
I, I did wanna ask, cause I was comparing the previous submission. So I wanted to ask Dana, what do you think they've adjusted? It looks like they?
They changed the material.
They changed the materials.
Right.
So the, the.
They got rid of some of the, and like the orange thing they proposed that they're going to change, and so they did make an effort in this application. But Harb has not even been able to speak with them or work anything out with them, so I just don't know. I'm just not comfortable personally approving it, even though it looks like they did make a motion. But, you know, they're, they still already are, they've gotten citations here that, just because they're not working with us.
Is, is there anything with the current application that does not meet the standards of Harb?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And if, if I may direct a question to the solicitor, because someone doesn't come to a meeting, does that disqualify their application?
So before the Harb, I would argue that they have the burden of proof, uh, meaning that they have to present their application. However, once Harb makes a recommendation, whether they appeared before us, uh, should not affect our decision.
I'm just personally not convinced they're going to do any of the things that they suggest they're going to do.
I I, I think that is a valid concern, um, and unfortunately, that, that can affect our approval, approval or denial, um, he I'd have to use our enforcement procedures with our codes department then.
So the fact that they are in in violation and they have not corrected the violation concerning signage because Harb voted six oh, we don't, we don't have any grounds for rejecting it on the basis of, we're not confident that they are going to comply because they've already not complied with our, our signage regulations.
Correct. We have to take the application at face value, and if they don't comply, then the enforcement procedures that are afforded to the code enforcement department have to be followed.
So the code violation that's currently in play is completely separate from?
Correct.
So I have a question then. So basically, I have to vote for this at this point. I have to agree to this, it sounds like.
I cannot tell anyone individually how to vote. I would suggest that council, uh, approve this application.
Okay, but I can.
Few years' experience. Any other questions for, uh, regarding this item or for? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six two. Any other items out of Harb tonight, Ms. Dugan?
No, that's all.
Very good. With that, we'll move on to planning commission with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have one project in front of us, uh, for, uh, the, um, Good Samaritan House on, um, uh, new, new Good Samaritan House on, uh, High Street, and I'll let the solicitor explain the project.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, as Mr. Moore said, the applicant this evening is Good Samaritan Services. This application concerns two contiguous parcels of land located at one thirty-three and one thirty-five to one thirty-seven High Street, High Street Road, uh, High Street, um, consisting of approximately five thousand two hundred and one square feet, and more particularly identified as Chester County UPI numbers fifteen dash five dash five nineteen and fifteen dash five dash five two zero, which are currently improved with three residential structures containing sixteen bedrooms and are operated by the applicant. The applicant proposes to consolidate the two parcels into a single lot, demolish the existing residential improvements, and construct a single attached multifamily building consisting of sixteen bedrooms, as well as a front porch, a rear outdoor area with retaining wall, landscaping, lighting, stormwater management facilities, and related improvements. There are three items that I would note with this application. Uh, the applicant intends to provide three dedicated parking spaces for the development in the parking area located on the parcel uh, at one oh four High Street down the block. Um, the applicant intends to utilize an environmentally friendly reuse of stormwater, uh, where it's collected and used for flushing of toilets in the dwelling. And currently, the building sits a couple feet into the borough-owned right-of-way. Um, the applicant is proposing that the new building will be out of the right-of-way on their own property, uh, but their porch will be in the right-of-way with an easement agreement similar to the patio easement that we provided to Molly Maguires. The applicant has requested two waivers. Uh, one is from Sado section twenty-two dash five oh two point one A, uh, requiring landscaping plan to be certified by a planting professional in order to allow the landscaping plan for the development not to be prepared by a certified planting professional, and a waiver from Stormwater Management Ordinance twenty-three dash three oh six, requiring the onsite infiltration of the stormwater in order to allow the development to not provide the otherwise required infiltration and instead provide a fifty-gallon rain barrel and two thousand gallon underground storage cistern with piping into the building for the non-potable water reuse for flushing toilets. After reviewing the project at several meetings, the planning commission unanimously voted at its March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting to conditionally recommend approval of the applicant. Um, I see that the applicant is here. Uh, do you have, would you like to come to the podium and add anything?
Hello, counsel. My name's Nate Hoffer. I'm the chief executive officer of Good Samaritan Services. Thank you so much for entertaining this project tonight. It was a pleasure working with the planning commission for about a year, uh, on, on this, and there was lots of good fruitful conversation that happened. So Good Sam, for those of you who aren't familiar with the work that we do, we've had a really good presence here in the borough since two thousand and two. Uh, just serving people, our neighbors in the community who are going through a housing crisis. So I'd like to think that Good Sam has a good reputation. We've been a good neighbor. We've had a really good relationship with the Borough of Phoenixville. And this project is really just about, uh, providing a nicer, um, housing facility, uh, for the folks that we serve. We're not proposing serving additional people. We're not proposing any programmatic changes. We're requesting to do the same impactful work that we've done for over twenty years, but just in a much more sustainable, nicer, safer, aesthetically pleasing facility that matches the other great development work that's happening on the north side of Phoenixville. So I thank you for reviewing this and giving it your attention. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I do. Um, I'm concerned about the lack of parking, only three spots.
Correct. That, that's a valid concern and one that was discussed, uh, a lot, uh, in the, in the planning commission process. So I think, um, it's important to understand the population that we serve and what we submitted in our application to the planning commission is historically the, the folks that we serve at Good Sam, specifically in this, this facility, uh, do not own vehicles. Um, and I would, uh, point to the fact that we've been in this community for over twenty years and have not had any parking issues with, with our neighbors during that time. So just to put that into context a little bit for you, uh, we did submit, you know, provide data, uh, the best that we could, uh, in our, uh, application to the planning commission. So historically, if we're serving thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen people in those homes, two to three at any given time will own a vehicle. Uh, so very minimal, and as, uh, Solicitor Denlinger, Denlinger stated, we own a property up the road at one oh four High Street, uh, that has, uh, eight parking spaces, um, that's owned by Good Sam. And so we would, you know, provide parking for any folks that are living here at that location. Thank you for the question.
Ms. Dugan, if I could add to that, um, condition number twelve of the resolution also requires the declaration of covenant is filed against one oh four High Street to reserve those three parking spaces in perpetuity. Now, three are reserved for this development.
Oh, three are at that facility for?
There are, exactly. There are eight total at that property.
Mm-hmm.
And I, uh, you have a large network of other facilities. I imagine that if somebody did have a car and you were full up, you could potentially house them elsewhere at a facility that has more parking.
Correct. We own several properties, uh, in the borough. Not all provide parking, but yes, we could get creative and do whatever we have to do to be a good neighbor, for sure.
And if, just to, people understand a little bit, you have three buildings. You're now gonna take them all down and build one. Can you just explain for the, for the council, I already heard it, you know, why this will be an improvement over the current?
Yes.
The structure.
Yes, thank you for the question, Mr. Moore. That's a good one. So right now, these, these properties, um, they are you know, very tiny individual homes. So three small kitchens, three small dining rooms. It's not the most efficient use of space. So as we look at this, we envision a scenario where we can make better use of the space, where we can actually have, uh, one large kitchen. Uh, we can have a meeting room. Uh, we, we can provide some space for our employees at Good Sam to provide counseling and the case management services to the folks that are living there. Just a better use of space. Um, also, these, these homes are very old, so they've seen better days, a lot of usage over the years. So we're, we just really see this as an investment into, into the future. We're obviously embedded in Phoenixville. We desire to, to be here for the long run. So, thank you for the, for the question.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for coming in, Mr. Hoffer. Appreciate this. Um, and this, so this is not a new use. This is continued use of a three individual, as you said, small alter homes.
Correct.
That have been there, and, um, and, and it's no increase in the number of individuals who will be residing.
That's exactly right.
At the facility. Um, and right now, the, I, I guess because it is three individual parcels regarding parking, there's, there's no parking requirement for those.
No, there's not, and that, that's correct. Yes, thank you for that, that comment. And yes, I mean, the reality is whether this project is approved or not, the parking dilemma remains, um, there.
Right.
Yes.
And as far as demolition of the existing structures, um, on the, um, it, looking at this photograph, uh, to our right, the existing structure and that, that will remain there, is that, is there a shared wall between those buildings?
There is.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I, I read in the Inquirer about demolition of properties between adjoining properties, and, and this is in Philadelphia. And, you know, the, the, the demolition, uh, people there, um, may not have been up to code, uh, and that they've had collapses.
Yeah.
I, I, and, and I, I saw the, one of the conditions here, I think it was nineteen or twenty, that before any demolition or, um, work starts, there has to be a pre, pre-construction meeting with the borough ending here. Is, has, has that shared wall been evaluated as to its integrity? Whether it will withstand demolition?
That, that, that's a very good question. I don't know the full extent that that examination has happened to this point. Obviously, that's a key consideration and concern for everybody involved. So I'm glad that we have Tom Carnaval, who's assisting us with this project, uh, and we've, you know, talked about that delicacy of, of this, of this project and making sure that, obviously, structural engineers are involved, proper assessments, that the right contractors are hired who have done this kind of work in the past. So we understand um, the unique nature of it, but we're also optimistic that it is achievable.
Okay. And, uh, it's, you know, and, and I, I, I've been looking at this property for forty-five years now. So I, I'm, I, I've seen what's happened on this end of High Street, and it, it's been a slow process, but I'm also thinking what's the potential adaptable reuse here when, say, fifty years down the road?
Yeah.
Maybe there's no more need for, uh, a, a service such as yours, but this building's here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and I know that's, that's not a question you can put on an application or whatever. I'm just trying to think, long-term, what's the adaptable reuse of this?
Yeah, well, I don't know if I can answer that directly, but I can say that this project will cost the organization a tremendous amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so our desire to remain and to stay, uh, will be highly significant. Um, so I don't know about adaptable reuses when all of us are gone. Um, I can't speak to that, but I do know this will be the, the the largest capital investment our organization has ever made, and it's gonna require a lot of, uh, donor buy-in and support, uh, with naming rights and recognition that will long out, outlast me. Uh, so the, the, the need and motivation to can, for Good Sam as an organization, which again, has a very strong track record in this town, to continue to operate that facility as we're proposing to, um, I have full confidence that that'll happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is it safe to assume that unlike some of our other, uh, recently approved development projects, that you'll actually be building this and not putting it on Zillow tomorrow?
Oh, that's an option.
It is. I mean, apparently, we found out recently.
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm joking. Uh, we will not be doing that.
Thank you. Any other questions for counsel? And so we're still requiring a motion?
Uh, yes, however, first we have to provide for public comment on this project. Is there any public comment, anyone here in the public, uh, in person who would like to comment on the proposed project that is here before you? Alright, seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on this project, um, at one three three and one three five to one three seven High Street?
Mr. Denlinger, I have no hands raised.
Alright, with that, I will close the public comment period and entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution officially conditionally approving the preliminary final subdivision of the land development plan for the development known as one thirty-three, one thirty-five, one thirty-seven High Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Anything else out of planning commission, Mr. Moore?
Uh, nothing further. We did have a, a decent, uh, education session at the last meeting concerning stormwater management. That was very helpful. Um, we will not have a meeting this month. There is no business before us, so, uh, our next meeting will be, uh, the next scheduled meeting is in, in May.
Very much. With that, we'll move on to Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee with Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not much to report. Uh, at the, at last month, we had a meeting, a working meeting of the Trail Subcommittee for Regional Planning Group, and trail construction easement, uh, acquisition is in various stages among the different municipalities. So, and that's, that's a discussion I'd like to have with the, with borough's staff and also, uh, the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, more in-depth. And the only other item of business that came before the Regional Planning Committee was that we approved a, um, a grant request that send a letter of support for a grant request, request for the Ridge, Ridge Road Park in East Bikeland. That's all I got, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, it's that time of year. We're getting a lot here. So here's an overview of our upcoming programs. Papa registration for the Papa basketball is open. Yoga with bunnies is April ninth from six to seven. Parents Night Out, mark your calendars, May ninth from five thirty to eight thirty. Mental Health Self-Care Saturday is May third from ten AM to one PM. It's a free event. Please drop in. It's a lot of fun. There's a lot of things offered there. Youth programs coming up, Schools Out Camps for spring break. There's a ramp-up skate two day, uh, today skate camp, Soul and Sky Yoga, Skyhawk Sports, FaceTime Theater, Young Ram Brands, and youth co-ed sports camps. All of these are around spring break, around the fourteenth. Children's Garden Club, volunteer families to help tend the garden in Reservoir Park and bring home the vegetables you harvest. Beginner Golf is April 3rd to May 1st. Unique game-based play program and modified learning equipment. T-Ball, April 12th to May 17. Get ready for some T-Ball at Patton-Adel Field. Learn to Skateboard, April 29th to June 3rd. Get on a board, no experience necessary, learn new skills. Multi-Sports Tot and Minihawks, April 3rd to May 1st. Kickstart your child's athletic journey with Multi-Sport Tots for ages 2 to 5. Neurodivergent Athletics, April 6 to May 4th. It's a program that provides opportunities for neurodivergent children to build their life skills and fitness movement. Youth Pickleball Clinic, April 22nd to May 24th, learning the basics of pickleball. We've got adult programs, a dog training class, April 10th to May 15. Loose leash walking, most mentioned problems from dog owners is they wish their dog had better leash walking skills. Or if you have a new puppy, this is a good opportunity. Strength and Stability Fitness Class, April 23rd to May 21st. Class is designed to enhance overall physical fitness. Watercolor for Beginners, April 30th to June 11th. Join the early class and learn the basics of watercolor painting with hands-on instruction. And then if you've completed the beginners and have, we have another class for anybody who moves into an advanced area. And finally, Pickleball Clenics are various dates and times. All level of Pickleball Clenics are offered at Fisher Court and Manavon Park. And that's all I have. Yep.
Lots of good things going on.
I think we moved the consent item to Rec Board.
That goes up to 13A.
Okay.
At least traditionally. With that, we'll go to Tac with Mr. Carmenito.
Yes, Mr. President. Tree Advisory Commission met last night. We discussed the volunteer planning, which will be happening this Saturday, primarily throughout parks in the borough. Volunteers will be out planting a number of trees in various parks. We also discussed tree removal list and replacement plan, so you'll start to see more trees going in throughout the borough. And finally, Earth Day Celebration on April 26th, the Tree Commission will have a table with the demonstrations set up. And our next meeting is May 5th at 6 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Carmenito. It's lovely, everything that's been going on with the trees. So lots of good progress. HRC with Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, if anybody recalls, in like the late fall, early winter, I had reported that our contact with the Pennsylvania HRC had actually been moving on, and some of our trainings with the state were on hold, but we did make a really great contact with the new contact from the Pennsylvania HRC. They have a recharged energy in the new year and made a lot of good contacts about what they're looking to do in the new year and the current state of our society. So very promising conversations there. Nothing substantial to add at this point, but we were excited about that, and I wanted to share that back. We continue with our scorecard, and we will have those trainings up and running as soon as possible embedded into our meetings. We do meet the first Wednesday of every month at the Recreation Center at 6 p.m. So our next meeting will be the first Wednesday of May at 6 p.m., and we welcome people to join.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into council action referred to from our committees, from council committees. We'll move into Personnel and Public Safety, Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, so we do have an item that was moved over from the consent agenda, and I would key that off to Ms. Dugan, as she has more information than I.
Well, we were hoping to have a motion to do this and then table it, because we haven't, you haven't had a chance to interview
Yeah, so.
at this point.
To be able to table?
Yeah. We'll make a motion to table.
Don't we need a motion?
I thought we needed a motion first. I thought somebody would make the, if Beth made the motion, I would make a motion to table.
That's fair.
Okay, I'll make the motion then. That's not how it was explained to me, so maybe we should work on that. So I'll make the motion to approve the reappointment of Frank Markey.
I'll make a motion to table this.
Motion is second and?
Second. Do we second the motion to the table?
Yes.
Yep.
And then that's it.
Then there's no discussion, so motion's tabled.
All right.
Okay. Anything else out of Personnel?
There's a vote on the motion to table.
That's right. We table so rarely. All those in favor to table?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. There we go. All right. Anything else out of Personnel and Public Safety?
No, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Moore with Parks and Rec Committee.
Nothing significant that wasn't dealt with on the consent agenda. So it was all pretty much one second. I do want to follow along with what Mr. Carmenito said. Along with all the great programs that Parks and Rec is doing, that Ms. Dugan was kind to share with us. Reminder that one of our first community events is Earth Day 2025 on Saturday, April 26th, from noon to four at the Rec Center and Reservoir Park. At Reservoir Park, actually. So make sure you turn out, and if you're more interested, you can go to the Phoenixville First site and has some details on what's going on there. Other than that, our next meeting will be next Tuesday at 6 p.m.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. We'll move into Policy with Mr. Carmenito.
Yes, Mr. President. Policy met this month. We had a lengthy discussion about ordinance for licenses for public performers. That was before us last month. We decided to do a little bit more work on that, and we'll be discussing it in coming meetings. Our next meeting is April 21st, immediately following Finance Committee meeting.
Very good. April 22nd.
Sorry. April 22nd, sorry.
That takes us with Mr. Weiss to Infrastructure Technology, Transportation and Sustainability.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. As always, lots going on in the ITTS Committee, particularly some great movements we have in terms of our march towards carbon neutrality, with some interesting conversations and initiatives around solar panel installations going on at the moment. As always, we love visitors. Our next meeting is one week from tonight on the 15th at 7 p.m. That's all.
Very good. Thank you very much. And lastly, in committee work, we have Finance with Ms. Dugan.
Everything was addressed on the consent agenda.
Very good. That takes us into the second and final round of public comment, public participation. Any members of the public who are wishing to make any comment? If you want to make your way up to the podium, we just ask that you sign in on the paper sheet that's provided, and let us know your name and if you're a business owner or resident. And those joining us virtually on the Zoom platform, if you want to raise your hand digitally, we can process through that list as well. There we go. We're gonna have one.
Josh Bentley, resident. So I don't know the noise ordinance exactly how it's enforced, but I will say that in an effort to, I don't mind if anyone owns a vehicle with one, two, three, four multiple wheels, and they like to play noise really loud out of that, a radio, or have a really loud exhaust system. But if there is a noise ordinance, I'd like it enforced heavily during the spring and summer and the upcoming times when people want to cruise, and I don't think Phoenixville needs to be known as a cruising borough. And I don't think I need that on the street, but I'm enjoying it when it's open, and I do support closing of Bridge Street, and when it's closed and I'm outside at a patio, I'm not going to acknowledge that you have a great radio. I'm happy that you do. If others want to acknowledge that and encourage it, that's fine with them. It's freedom. But enjoying meals and walking around, I just have seen more and more of it happening, the revving of engines and loud radios, and I just don't want it to turn to a thing that people think they should come here to do. I don't encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Seeing no other folks lining up for public comment and nobody online, we'll close the second and final round of public comment, which also brings us to the second and final round of council communication and updates. Seeing none, we'll move into staff reports. All items for manager, police, fire, planning, public works, finance, human resources, and recreation are provided in the council packets. One item to note, we have an upcoming meetings list for all the meetings between now and the middle of May that's provided within our agenda. And lastly, as we do every month, we do have our employee service anniversaries for April that we do like to recognize that it's over 50 years of service provided to by our dedicated staff, including Ed Bearden, our sanitation driver of 17 years, Donna Yashura, who's been our customer service rep nine years downstairs, Assistant Fire Chief Keith Bliss has served the Fire Department for eight years in that role. Tyler Howson, our Streets Utility Person, is six years in the role. Christine Gonkov has been with accounts receivable for four years. Ronnie Jennings has been our Streets Laborer for three years, and Alexis Strunk has been our Projects Coordinator for three years. So we do like to recognize all the time, effort, and dedication that our staff puts into making Phoenixville the best place to live, work, and play. With that, what is council's pleasure?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. We'll see everybody at the May meeting. Have a great night.